We will start with roll call. Mike Bullier.
Michael Bullier, Hebron.
Mike Sharon.
Mike Sharon, Hebron.
Joe Coletti.
Joe Coletti, Hebron.
Kirsten Erlinson.
Online.
Pam, is she online?
She's not online.
Kirsten Erlinson, and over. Carrie Froelino. Drew Golfing.
Drew Golfing, Marlboro.
Gabe Marks.
Gabe Marks, Hebron.
Amy Romancheck.
Amy Romancheck, Marlboro.
Scott Soyet.
Scott Soyet, and over.
Heather Summer, Hebron.
Heather, I don't know if you got me. It's Pam Farrington, Marlboro.
Thank you, Pam. Okay, if we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, add and delete agenda items if you can refer. Oh, sorry, I keep doing that. Every week I skip, every month I skip something. Public comments. Hebron and over and Marlboro, community engagement in attendance at BOE public meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the BOE may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the BOE is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the BOE is not permitted to engage in a discussion on the comments presented. Do we have anybody who is interested in making public comment? Thank you.
Sarah.
Sarah, come here. Yeah, you have to use the mic so they can hear you online.
Hello.
You give your name and address.
Yeah, is this on? Okay. Sarah Coppolino, 44 Hillcrest Drive in Amston. I am a soon-to-be parent of a seventh grader and I am also a science teacher at the high school. And I'm here tonight to ask you to please consider a cellphone-free school day for the high school policy moving forward. No longer do I feel like we can ignore the impact that these devices are having on the educational setting as well as on teen mental health as a result of just a few factors like the social isolation that they create. The sense of we're all together but alone is pretty overwhelming. The attention fragmentation and how they block students from having other experiences with those around them as well as some of the addictive properties that are built into many of the apps and social media platforms that our students are utilizing throughout the day. So I'm concerned as a parent as well as a teacher. We've, just as a quick anecdote, some of the things that I've noticed over my 17 years of teaching, although definitely increasingly significantly in the last two to three years. You know, just thinking of our own selves, the experience of picking up a phone and immediately getting lost in a scroll and forgetting what your purpose was. And if you can imagine doing that over and over and over throughout the school day, which is what I see students doing, either coming in from the hallway or doing a quick check between problems. It's a disruption in the class day and it's a distraction from the goals that we have in the classroom. And then if you put on top of that the idea that this is also happening in a developing brain where they're really craving that social interaction and again, the phone is there and blocking it in order for us to engage in the challenging types of lessons and tasks that we have in front of us in the classroom, whether it's putting together an argument or pulling together a complicated calculation. Those are things that require sustained focus and I would also say positive relationships. And both of those things are disrupted by having cellphones in the classroom. We know that relationships have, we know that relationships build better academic outcomes for students as well as having many mental health benefits that prevent them from having other anxieties and issues in the classroom. They disrupt relationship building because of their constant nature as well as, you know, I mean, I love chemistry, but I am never going to be as engaging as an app that is designed to suck their focus. And the other way that I see it really disrupting relationship building and impacting the classroom setting is that by having to police these devices, I'm starting from a place of disciplinarian rather than being on their side. And so I really feel like it's important that we look at what we're doing for our students in this moment. Because I feel like wherever I look right now, the research is really compelling and it's really speaking to my anecdotal experience in the classroom that these devices are causing a problem. So if we're serious about student mental health, if we're serious about social emotional learning, and I would also say if we're serious about retaining really high-quality teachers, it's really frustrating to be put in that position every day of having to create a policy, enforce the policy. So I would really love to see for the seven and a half hours of the day that they are in our care with our one devices that they have access to. I would really love to see us go cellphone-free, the way that the middle school has. So we do have a policy that works. I would love to see that extended to the high school. At a bare minimum, I would like to see us at least have a policy in place that is universal, that students, parents, and teachers can rely on and understand so that it's not what feels unsustainable and piecemeal to me right now in the classroom. I really think it's what's best for our students as well as for our faculty. So, thank you for hearing my piece.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I am Kathy Loizell of 55 Adewan Hood Trail. I don't think I've met any of you, but I am also here to echo the sentiments about a cellphone policy at the high school. There is another school in Ardurg that did just implement a policy against cellphones. That would be Ellington High School. Unfortunately, they brought that forth mid-year, which was not a great decision and they are using, I believe, lock boxes. There are pouches that you can use with a magnet release and I know Illing Middle School in Manchester uses those. There is an article about that in the Washington Post at this moment. That was a new article. It goes through a lot of the benefits of this. Some of those being higher scores on standardized tests, higher end-of-year scores as well. You are not worried that you're going to have a child changing in his or her PE class and then a parent calling with a lawsuit over a photo of a child. You are not worrying about TikTok fights in the middle of your school day, nor children taking 15 minutes for a bathroom break using his or her cellphone in there. There are kids in Gilead Hill making TikTok videos in these bathrooms. There are kids at Hebron L. doing the same. There were photos of penises shown at, I apologize for wording, at the sixth grade social on Friday night. And these are things that are well-chaperoned. These are normal school days. These are tiny bits of these stories. And going forth, we have to think of this, like, our parents and our grandparents thought of this with smoking cigarettes. We didn't know in 50 years what that would do to people and we have the power now to change that in our own children in this district, making teacher retention not as big of an issue. I actually left the classroom. I was a seven-year teacher, high school, ninth through 12th grade, all four. I collected five or six phones a day and it's unfair to me, if I were a teacher, to say, "You can't have a phone in my class," but I don't care if Ms. Coppolino lets you have phones in there. We're pitting teachers against each other. We're not being universal as a school. It has to be a universal policy. You have to have a PR strategy to get all stakeholders on boards, parents, students, teachers, administrators. Everyone has to follow it and it's going to be just like every other rule. But we have the power right now in 2024 to change this before four more years go by and it damages our children more. Thank you.
Hi, Amy DeChesere, 650 Gilead Street in Hebron. I am a mother of an incoming seventh grader and the conversation that we're having is just one that's happening in grassroots in the community right now. A lot of us have read the book, The Anxious Generation, and it's just prompted a conversation. So on, you know, the rethinking of it, of cellphones and smartphones that have grown organically amongst our children. And, you know, I'm old enough that there was a smoking policy at my high school. So I'm not going to say how old I am, but there was a smoking policy. And, you know, we've learned that that's not okay. And we didn't know years ago. And I think to rethink these smartphones and what they're doing to the kids, you know. And I just purchased a smartphone for my son who's coming into seventh grade, but it's a lot of conversations that we're having. And I will tell you that it's also hard when you're one of the parents that are the holdout because they'll be like, "Did you have fun with your friends?" And they're like, "Well, they were on their phone the whole time." And so it is a concern to, you know, I want them to be strong academically, but it's a time of social connection and it's so important when they come here. And it's really hard when, you know, you're the parent who's like, "You should talk to your friends, but there's no one to talk to because they're all sucked into this virtual world." And so, you know, listening, I've spent some time, like, starting to educate myself about some of the studies and what's going on. And a lot of schools are having success going phone-free. And I don't think a year ago I would be standing here saying that this is a policy I wanted, but now that I've read about it and learned more, I think it's really something to consider. So thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Anybody online? Well, thank you very much for taking the time to come in and speak with us. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the addition of the agenda item that Colin passed out. We have a motion to add an agenda item to discuss the allocation of funds to the middle school line project as Agenda Item 9.6 under New Items.
So moved.
Second, Gabe Marks, Mike Bullier, Hebron.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, so. Bill will go and pick my phone up right now. It's where my notes are. So, Board, the Chair Report. I wanted to congratulate all the graduating seniors. We're looking forward to graduation on Friday evening. Really encourage the students to just really make good decisions in these last few weeks and stay safe. We look forward to seeing all these kids back in visits and graduation next year when they all come and watch their friends. If you're planning on attending graduation and it's outside, you need to, graduation starts at 6:00. As a board member, if you're planning on attending, it's 5:30 in the gym for the procession. As a board member, if you're planning on attending the eighth grade promotion, that's Friday morning and that's at 8:00. You need to go straight to the baseball field and meet at the stand there. I'd be there by 7:45. I would encourage board members, anybody who can put that into your schedule, to try and do so. I was there last year, you were there, Gabe, I think you were there. It's really nice to attend. Congratulations to the baseball team who went to the semifinals. I, somebody invited the Board of Ed to attend the semifinals, which were at Duncan Park where the Yard Goats play. And I don't follow much baseball, but I thought, "Well, I'm going to go in and I'm going to see that." And I'm so glad that I did. As each of the kids went up to bat, their picture was up on the Jumbotron. And it was just, they did such a great job. It was really wonderful and exciting to see. Also attended the Evening of the Arts, which was fantastic. They had the cafe that was in the cafeteria where kids could sign up and perform. Some teachers performed. And then after that, we went into the auditorium where the band and chorus performed. It was really a great night. I would really encourage any board members to try and attend any of the events that pop up. It really gives you some insight into what's happening at the school. And, you know, it's certainly not an evening wasted at all. And I think that's it for, yep.
Well, I also would just like to congratulate our seniors who will be graduating on Friday and echo your sentiments of making good decisions and being safe. I would like to thank our teachers and staff, administration, everybody involved, obviously, in making sure that Ram functions as smoothly as it does. It's been a great year and I appreciate what everybody does and their contributions to the district. Attended Evening of the Arts last year. We played it years ago, continue going. Baseball team went and saw them. To the elementary district. Fantastic. New event, which will certainly be something that we work into the end-of-the-year celebration. I know Mary Rose went to Marlboro. I went with the high school administration to Hebron. It was great. Kids walked around the building. Ram seniors walked around the building. The students, the current students at the school stood outside with their teachers and just greeted all the kids as they walked through. High fives, they had signs. At Hebron Elementary School, they actually had taken pictures from the yearbook when our kids were 12th grade or were sixth graders. And our kids were like running around trying to find their pictures in the walls and it was, it was really, and, you know, they're, "Oh, look at you, look at that." You know, it was kind of funny to see. And I can't really recall his name, but there was actually a Hebron teacher who had retired a couple of years ago.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones, who found out about it, came back just to be there for the event. And I actually was there and he was definitely somebody special because kids were gravitating to Mr. Jones. It was, it was a pretty cool experience and lots of handshakes and hugs and got some really good pictures. So again, just a really great, great experience for the students and the staff at the elementary schools. I think I heard positive feedbacks from them as well. So I appreciate the suggestion. It was, it was fantastic. And yeah, it's, we've got, today was our final day of school. We actually recognized our two, Ginny Jacoby and Katie Bubendorf, our two retirees from the district, and wished them well as they head off to retirement. And as I said to them when I presented some gifts on behalf of the district and the board, moving forward, every day is a Saturday and I wish them all the best for that. And yeah, we're excited about graduation and we've got four half-days left and ready for summer. For summertime.
Okay. So, the next on the agenda is 7.1, Approval of Minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular May 20th, 2024 Board of Education meeting?
I'll make the motion, Joe Coletti.
Joe Coletti made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Mike Sharon.
Mike Sharon, seconded? Any discussion?
Yeah, actually, there's a minor typo in there, a minor mess.
I think we fixed it.
Sorry, correct, okay.
What you noted, we fixed and actually posted the corrected version in the outcome.
So I haven't looked at it again.
What was noted, because I just, it was just the vote that wasn't.
There was a vote that wasn't recorded.
Right.
But I also, this one, I don't know if it's in there or not. I had asked, my comments, they changed a little bit, the recording of my comments. Just from, it's a religious belief to something like it's a personal objection.
We did accommodate that request, yes, sir. Yep. So the outcome of that vote is also then? It should have been updated in the, it should have been updated in the minutes and that were reposted online. Okay. Yep.
Any other discussion? Anybody online? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to stand because I wasn't there.
The one abstent. Okay. 7-1B, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting on May 29th, 2024, for the Board of Education meeting?
So moved, Scott Soyet.
Second, Gabe Marks.
Scott was first and Gabe was second. Any discussion on those minutes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstain? One abstain?
Yes.
Don't want something.
Yeah.
Do we not have the minutes from our, the meeting we had last week?
Yeah, so those will be reviewed and approved at the next meeting because that meeting took place later in the week after we had gotten the agenda really pretty much constructed. We just didn't include it in this one, but they are, we're going to be good to go next time. Thank you. Yep.
Okay. All right, that brings us to Old Business. 8.1, we have a second read of policies. Do we have a motion to adopt Policy 6205, Curricular Exemptions as Presented?
I'll make the motion with a note that it is, we're approving only the policy. It's also included a form or anything else. So we're approving just the policy.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I can speak to that. So Scott brought up a really good point that I'll just make mention of. So when we are approving policies, the language of the motion is specifically to adopt the policy. In many cases, there's forms or regulations that are not part of the policy. Those can be updated by administration as necessary. If there's changes to a form, we can make those changes. So the motions are simply for the policy being adopted, which really is the role of the Board of Education. The Board does policies. They don't get into regs, they don't get into forms, but.
Okay, do I have a second for that?
I'll second Carrie.
Okay, so we've, Scott Soyet was first, Carrie Froelino second. Any other discussion on that? Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay. Brings us to 8.1B. We have a motion to adopt Policy 1160, Community Relations as Presented. So moved. Okay, Gabe is first and Carrie was second.
Sounds good.
Could I, I'm sorry, there is an errant to, TO, in there that should not be in there. So it's a, it's, there's a sentence that says, "The Board expects that the students, families, and community to share the school's commitment, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." The word "to" right before the word "share" should be omitted. It's a minor typographical error. If the Board is okay with it, it will be, you'll be approving it without the word "to" in that specific sentence.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay. 8.1C, do we have a motion to delete Policy 6112, School Day?
So moved, Scott Soyet.
Second?
Second.
Amy Romancheck, second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay. 8.1D, we have a motion to delete Policy 6114, Drills for Emergencies.
I'll make the motion, Joe Coletti.
Joe Coletti, second?
I'll second.
Is that Carrie?
Yes.
Carrie Froelino? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstain? 8.1E, we have a motion to delete Policy 6115, Silent Meditation and Pledge of Allegiance.
I'll make the motion.
Scott Soyet, second?
Second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Carrie Froelino? Any discussion on that? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Mike supposed?
Yeah.
Mike Bullier is supposed? Okay. We're going to do a roll call vote to make sure. Mike Bullier?
Nay.
Mike Sharon?
Yes.
Joe Coletti?
Yes.
Kirsten Erlinson?
Yes.
Pam Farrington?
Yes.
Carrie Froelino?
Yes.
Drew Golfing?
Yes.
Gabe Marks?
Yes.
Amy Romancheck?
Yes.
Scott Soyet?
Yes.
And Heather Summer is yes. Okay, that motion passes. Okay. Brings us to New Business, which is the discussion of possible action on the appointment of Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
All right, so I am pleased to recommend Mary Rose Meade for the appointment by the Board to the position of Director of Curriculum and Instruction for Regional School District 8 effective July 1st, 2024. Ms. Meade was interviewed for the position by a committee consisting of district teachers and administrators and was unanimously recommended for the position. For the past year, Ms. Meade has served as a curriculum, as the curriculum coordinator and instructional coach for the district and has done an outstanding job in this position. Prior to her current role, she was a teacher and English department coordinator for the district for nine years and had previously taught at Ram from 1992 to 97. She is also currently an adjunct faculty member for UConn in their School of Pharmacy, which I find intriguing. And has also worked at Manchester Community College, ECSU, and Yale University. And it is my recommendation that the Board appoint Ms. Rose into this, or Ms. Meade into this position. Yep.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Mike Bullier, and second is Gabe Marks. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, motion passes.
So Ms. Meade has been kind enough to leave the La Crosse banquet and join us this evening. If, please, if the Board would just allow Ms. Meade to step up to the podium and say a couple of things, I think it'd be great.
Doesn't, it doesn't creak like in the high school. I just want to thank the Board for supporting this position in our district. It is so necessary and so needed. And I speak to that from being partly, doing some of that this year and realizing how much needs to be done. But I also thank you for your support of my appointment to it. Regional School District 8, Ram High School has such a deep place in my heart. As Colin said, in 1991, I saw a listing in December for a job teaching English out in this little eastern Connecticut district. I only knew, the only thing I knew was Amston Lake and the Frog Rock or Monster Rock, whatever. It was the green rock that's now the Eagle Rock. So some debate about what it actually was. It wasn't as beautifully painted. Got the job to teach English and run a drama program out here. Then I started running drama programs in the summer with AHM. We bought a home here and have raised four sons, three of whom who have graduated from Ram and one of whom, God willing, will graduate next year. So Ram hasn't just been a job for me, it's my home. And so now here, we're 30 years later from those start, that start. And I'm incredibly excited to be able to bring life to this position and to help our district grow in really important ways and to make the important changes for our students. I would be remiss if I did not take this moment to very publicly thank Dr. Penny Briskell, Dr. Michael Sarusi, and also Dr. Colin McNamara for their support, for their nurturing, for the coaching they've provided me throughout this year and also for, maybe more important for me right now, the confidence that they have in me to really bring my energy to this position. So I am humbled, I am really grateful to be able to serve Regional School District 8 in this position. So thank you so much for your support.
Very exciting. And we're putting your right to work with the next agenda item, but I... Well, good.
Okay, so, um, do you want to make a recommendation first?
No, I would just do discussion and possible action.
Okay, so 9.2 is Discussion and Possible Action on the Regional School District 8, Teacher and Leader Evaluation and Support Plan. You have some enclosures, 9...
Nope. No, no, you're, you're absolutely, so there's two enclosures in your board packet. There's 9.2A, which is a memo from Ms. Mead to myself. It kind of explains things, but I'll quickly summarize that. And then Eric's gonna pull up a PowerPoint presentation. But just to quickly summarize, the Region 8 Professional Development and Evaluation Committee approved the revised educator evaluation plan at our May 15, 2024 meeting. The next step in this process is for the Board to do a vote to approve the plans so that we can send the plans to the State Department of Education as we are required to do by state statute. So what we wanted to do is provide a brief overview of the plan. And we've asked, as we said, we're putting Mary Rose to work right away, and she's gonna get up and just do a brief presentation and certainly entertain any questions that Board members may have about the plan before we vote.
So this is just very briefly about the plan that we've put together in conjunction with the state plan. So Eric, we're gonna go to the next slide. This is our Professional Development and Evaluation Committee. You can see all of these names here. I would like to say we can be very proud as a district that we have a PDEC committee that not only meets the state threshold for PDEC but exceeds it. And as a result, the plan that we worked on this year has been created collaboratively by a large voice of stakeholders within the district. Another incredible benefit of having such vigorous PDEC is that our yearly professional development calendars are full of meaningful and substantive learning for teachers so that they can bring really excellent practices to the students. Some of our presentations during professional development come from teachers on PDEC or other teachers who have offered their special skills. So our PDEC is just incredible. And having gone to a lot of the state trainings about this new TVAL system, I have found there are many districts that really don't have a PDEC. So I am incredibly grateful that we have so many voices on our PDEC committee. If you go to the next slide, the thinking around the new teacher evaluation system that again is really from the state of Connecticut and driven by them is that it's based on continuous learning for teachers. And that is really the biggest shift in this evaluation plan. Because up until this point, a teacher would be evaluated and they would get a ranking on where they stood, number one to four, four being, you know, outstanding, exceptional, three profession, two working on it, and then one needing more work. They, there would be like 16 or 20 points. And so every evaluation was just an endpoint. It was, okay, you got ranked this way, and here's your rankings at the end of the year. But there wasn't growth built into that, and we want that for our students, so we certainly want that for our faculty because they're going to be the ones that are the change agents for the students. So the new model raises the bar. Evaluation is no longer an endpoint, it's an opportunity for collaboration, for reflection, for further goal setting, and for growth. And if our teachers engage in this process with fidelity, which our PDEC is very dedicated to having happen, then ultimately our students are gonna be beneficiaries of these much stronger practices. And the same is true for district leaders because the plan is also, there's also a part of the plan which is the same continuous growth process for district leaders. If you go to the next slide, Eric, the state of Connecticut issued a plan that hit all of their have-tos. We in Region 8 with our PDEC had a few things that we wanted to change. And I'm just gonna go quickly through the changes and sort of explain why. The first thing changed that we made was to prioritize teachers that are new to the district or new teachers, you know, in general, just brand new to the profession, for goal setting, for observations, so that for those that are new, they have a priority on the timetable so that we're really getting to those newer faculty members early on. So if they need extra coaching or support, even if they came from another district, we have, we may have different standards, we may have different ways of doing things, making sure that we're supporting them. So that was one piece that we included. We added a cohort to the state plan. The state had separated how we were gonna evaluate whom by cohorts, and they had two. And I'll show you a slide with that in a minute because I know it's a little bit confusing. But we did it, the reason we did it was to provide a more thorough and timely evaluation and support for teachers, again, who may have been employed outside of our district, not necessarily tenured in another district. And so we wanted to make sure we were including a little extra support for them. And clarification within the text of the plan, we also included to make sure that we noted that the goals that the teachers are setting, excuse me, the goals that the teachers are setting are linked to either a strategic plan or the school or district goals. I'm sorry, I'm just getting over being sick. Another thing, clarity around the scope and standards that will be evaluated when the teachers require an extra level of coaching or support or evaluation. So if there's a teacher who's, needs more support, we are expanding the way that we might evaluate them. Excuse me. And then also clarity around when union representation will be part of the process. With the state plan, I'm sorry. Getting over bronchitis. The state plan is the default. So if the Board doesn't accept our slight amendments, then, then we'll just default to the state procedural vote. So if you go to the, yeah, next thing. So this is the evaluation timeline, it is from the state plan. One thing that is not explicitly written in the plan, but it's common practice, but I wanted to share that explicit in the state plan is that only people in '09, '09, '09, '09, '09 are able to evaluate, and that holds true. And so for leaders, generally, the superintendent would evaluate the principals, any central office staff. Sometimes they will also evaluate assistant principals, however, the state plan accounts for principals evaluating assistant principals. And then teachers are assigned to a building administrator, and they're the ones that do those evaluations. And that's not changing, that's a practice that has been part of practice for many years. So that's consistent, none of that is changing, but it wasn't explicitly in the, in the plan, so I wanted to just mention that. On the next slide are the cohorts, and this is where we made a little bit of a change. So the state had the two cohorts, and we did delineate the cohorts a little bit differently to provide more support. Oh my, thank you. I'm hanging on by a thread. We delineated that so that, again, it's really about not just accountability, but offering support to new teachers in the district. Part of our conversations around this are that we know that people are leaving the district. We just heard somebody in public comment, not leaving the profession, and we just heard somebody in public comments speak about that. So making sure that we are really supporting new faculty is incredibly important. And so we separated the cohorts into new teachers and then teachers from other districts who had not yet been tenured. So we're really making sure that they're in that cohort one, they have priority of really focusing on them. But we also, for teachers that are new to the district but were tenured somewhere else, we still created, we created a separate sort of plan for them because, again, they're coming into a new situation with new expectations. And so we wanna make sure that we are providing, not only providing them support, but also keeping an eye on how things are going for them. I think we sometimes forget, even if someone's taught for a long time, when they come into a new place with some new expectations, that they need support for that. So that, this concludes the slides that we put together. I appreciate the chance to bring this, for this procedural vote, and once we do vote, you vote on this, we just can go into the state portal and send it through. I'm very confident that they will accept it. I've been working with Sharon Fulher and Jessica Ocasio at the state, where the people that are gonna actually review this. So I'm very confident that, that they will approve it. Does anybody have any questions?
I, yeah.
Yeah.
You said earlier, you made a reference to '09, '09.
Oh, sorry, yes.
I don't know what that is.
Thank you. So an '09, '09 certification is an administrator, actually wrote that in there, but I skipped it because I couldn't talk. It's an administrative certification, so principals, vice principals, curriculum coordinators have an '09, '09 certification. And so you go through a leadership program. An '09, '09 would be what Colin has, which is a superintendent certification.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I'll bring that up, answer the one I had, which was, who did the evaluation?
Oh, right, yes, yes, perfect. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Very much.
Way to get through it.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the Regional School District 8 Teacher and Leader Evaluation and Support Plan as presented?
So moved.
Okay, so Drew first and Scott second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, motion passes. Brings us to 9.3, which is the personnel report.
So there's an enclosure in your packet that identifies that we have one resignation as a part of our personnel report for this evening. Austin Carey, a career and technical education teacher for Ram High School, has resigned effective June 14, 2024. Mr. Carey has been employed by Ram since August 29, 2022. We certainly wish Austin all the best with everything moving forward.
9.4 is Discussion and Possible Action on Renewing the Food Service Contract with Witsen's.
At this time, I will turn things over to Ms. Briskell.
So in your packet, you have an enclosure 9.4. As part of last month's meeting, we got to meet Witsen's regional director, John Kurnier, and he informed us about Witsen's and what Witsen's does for us. As part of the USDA requirements, there's federal language that allows us, the food service, the school food authority to renew a contract with our food service management company for up to five years. So there are five annual renewals. This will be our last renewal under this contract that we have with them. And during next year, next fiscal year, we'll be starting to go out to bid. That's just procedural, how things will be done. So basically, I'm looking for the Board to allow the superintendent of schools to enter into contract for the fourth extension.
So it's the fourth, but it says amendment number three, so I got a little confused in the subject line.
And amendment number four will run through July 1, 2024 through June. Oh, I didn't change the title, I'm sorry, that's my bad.
So that should be four, four, two. Okay, all right, just wanted to get my dates right.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to authorize the superintendent to enter into a one-year contract extension with Witsen's?
So moved.
Drew Golfen, a second?
I'll second, Gabe Marks.
Gabe Marks. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstain?
Thank you.
And back over to you again, we're on to 9.5, the financials.
All right, so 9.5 is the expenditure and revenue report. As of May 31, 2024, there is a net favorable, a projected net favorable position of $1,318,833, less the projected shortfall in revenue of $218,444, leaving a revised net favorable projection of $1,103,89. The shortfall in revenue is in March part due to the excess cost. So excess cost is based on our high-cost specialized students, that's not a guaranteed formula. And then unfortunately, if students leave us, then we not get that money for educating those students. So that's where the majority of that lies. There were some additional, like our rentals of our school facility this year have been going through the roof, so we're still seeing a lot there. So in August, you may learn a lot more as to what happened when we closed off the year. Again, based upon the projection, it appears that the areas in the budget that have realized the highest savings are salary, purchase services, and benefits. Again, in August, I will tell you more when the whole year is finalized. The capital improvement project, the central rooftop unit, will start on June 17. The facilities condition assessment, we're still awaiting the finalized report. Capital nonrecurring, the drainage project in the field for North 316.
It's been going well.
We've had a minor hiccup, but I think after Wednesday morning, we'll learn a lot more. But it should be fine. And are there any questions that the Board may have at this time? Oh, Mr. Soyet, do you want me to point out?
Sure.
Okay, so if you look, so the memo page, the page next to it, at the bottom. So the question that Mr. Soyet had was about transfers. So at the bottom of the page, you have expenditure budget status, then you have the title, original budget, and you have the word transfers. So all those transfers are cumulative. And then if you go to the page right after that, is a printout from decisions for the financial system. You'll see the title that says budget and adjustments, adjustments is the transfer. And anything that's captured in there is what's happened in that line, in that object code, that one particular account number.
But it's not just this month.
No, it's not this month.
So the excess cost, is that what money we would get from the state?
That is money from the state.
And I thought, maybe I wasn't paying attention right, but I had heard that the state was coming through with more.
That'll be for next fiscal year, not this fiscal year.
Okay.
If it happened during the legislative process, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so that's why I got my years mixed up. Okay, good, thank you.
All right, so moving on, we have 9.1, let's make sure. Okay, so 9.5B is the food service. Unfortunately, due to the timing of this meeting, I do not have anything to present at this moment. So again, I will have two separate reports for the August meeting, so you can see. And then 9.5C is the student activity. It balances with the bank. Are there any questions that you might have on 9.5C? So hearing none, I'm gonna keep going. Your handout for 9.5D was the stip account. We earned a very nice dividend of $1,655.93 in the month of May. Are there any questions that the Board may have on the stip account?
Just going back on, I was trying to find my, my notes, the levies.
Oh, the dollars, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. So you, what, I round to the nearest dollar here, so you don't see the penny. So that's why it's the, and I was debating whether I should tweak it, but I just figured I'll leave it at as is.
So I just feel that's more transparent. But thank you for asking that, yeah, it's just rounding.
The question was, why the levies for each town was off by $1?
And so there were no questions in 9.5D. And then 9.5E is the CNR and reallocation. So as part of closing up for year-end, the Director of Facilities has informed me that there's projects that have been finalized and there's money that's left in certain projects that he would like to release and put into unallocated. So under capital improvement fund, the replacement of the exit signs, the available funds after everything has been finalized is $1,872. And he would like to reallocate that to, from the replacement exit sign project to the CIP unallocated. And then the same is occurring with the high school roof repairs and their capital not recurring, as well as the HVAC review for indoor air quality. So those $2 amounts, he would like to move from their respective projects into the CNR unallocated account. Are there any questions? So hearing none, this... So hearing none, this will require a motion by the board.
Yep. So do we have a motion to approve the reallocation of one thousand, eight hundred and seventy two dollars from the replacement of exit signs projects to CIP unallocated? And to approve the reallocation of three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars from high school roof repairs? And twenty three thousand, three hundred and twenty one dollars and fifty six cents from the HVAC review of indoor air quality to C and R unallocated?
So move.
Okay, Mike Sharon first.
Second, Gabe Marks.
Gabe Marks, second. Any discussion on those?
Would we, just curious, would we put the money anyplace else?
Um, so normally we put it into unallocated because at this moment, we just don't have a project that is requiring the funds. Unfortunately, there is one coming up, but at this moment.
Yeah, I was just looking over the blinds, right?
Unallocated and then take it out of.
Just move around the bucket, just okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstain? Nine point five F, budget appropriation transfers.
So in your enclosure, you have thirty journal entries, a total three hundred and forty six thousand, nine hundred and forty one dollars and ninety five cents. Those are the transfers that happened in the month of May. I will be bringing any transfers for the month of June to the August meeting. Any questions on these?
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the transfers for May twenty twenty four in the total amount of three hundred and forty six thousand, nine hundred and forty one dollars and ninety five cents?
I'll make a motion.
Joe Coletti? Second?
Second.
Scott Soyet, second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, that brings us to. Six, right, I think you've been had it ready. All right, do we have a motion to move ten thousand, one hundred and forty one dollars from capital nonrecurring, unallocated to the middle school blind project?
I'll make a motion.
Joe Coletti? You have a second?
I'll second.
Mike Sharon?
Stream, my board members, there was a handout that I distributed earlier on that that explains the reason. We can certainly take any questions if people have it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, anyone abstain?
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to committee reports. Facilities, safety, and transportation.
We have not had any facilities moving since our last session, and so the schedule for next school year's facilities moving will be forthcoming.
Okay. Finance, audit, compliance, and insurance.
So we haven't had any meetings.
Right.
But we do, we, after the, after this agenda was published, we identified a need to have one. So funny how things can change in a moment's notice. So we are actually scheduled to meet tomorrow night at six thirty to discuss an agenda item that I will anticipate will require a special board meeting. Hopefully within the next couple of weeks to to just for some business that needs to be done. Unfortunately, it came really late last week and it just, it didn't provide us time to include in this agenda item. But again, if we have to schedule a special meeting, it will, it could be virtual, it could be very, very quick of the full board.
Okay. Negotiation. Kirsten, Amy, or my?
We have been actively meeting. We have two.
Tentative agreement. Yeah, yeah, so yeah, we've come to a tentative agreement with one of the non-certified bargaining units. We have to wait for that group to vote on that tentative agreement to ratify it. Once it is voted and ratified by the by the union, it would then come to the full board for a vote and ratification. I'm hoping that we can combine the special meeting that needs to happen for the sake of what I just talked about with finance with that special meeting. Try to be as efficient, as timely as possible. And negotiations continue to go on with the other non-certified group that we have been working.
Okay.
Next year, the cert?
Yes, next fall, we will be negotiating with the teachers. Yep.
Policy committee?
We, excuse me, we continue to review the policies. We've been meeting every month, but I think we may have had our last for the school year. And we are reviewing them for accuracy and how they align with Connecticut State stature statutes. Colin, do you know off the top of your head how many redundant policies we have deleted and how many policies have been updated?
Redundant policies, I could tell you that we've updated a fairly significant number. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty to. Fifty five.
And six policies have been reviewed.
So fifty six reviewed and updated, and we've deleted twenty one policies over the course of this school year. That's not factoring when we started this process.
And if I misspeak, somebody please correct me. But pretty much what the redundant policy, obviously, they're redundant. Like, for instance, the policy about the flag today, we already had a policy addressing it. So there was no reason to have two policies. So we've been doing a lot of work like that, and I can, I would expect that that will continue at the start of next year as well. It's all.
All right, program and communication.
I don't think since the, I don't believe since the new board has been seated, I don't, I don't think that we've had a meeting of that program subcommittee since the seating. You didn't, you didn't do this.
Okay, uh, school choice committee?
You guys okay if I take it? So the, the, this is a subcommittee, we, I, I will own the fact that I neglected to include on the agenda that we needed to have the identification of a subcommittee chair. And since it was a special meeting, we couldn't add that to the, to the, to the agenda. So my, my mistake, that the subcommittee chair will be identified the next time we meet. We met last week, had a, had a really great conversation with the, the group. What I did was I, I shared information with that group that had been previously shared with the finance subcommittee back in the fall. It was really just an overview of the, the proposal or presentation that had been given by administration for Columbia Public Schools back, back in the fall. Board members asked some really good questions. I'm working now to identify, see if I can find a colleague from another school district who actually is a superintendent who takes students as a school of choice from another town. And, and hopefully, we can find maybe a board of ed member from that same town who would be willing to just talk with our subcommittee members. There's an interest in trying to get a sense of, you know, what it's been like becoming a school of choice and, you know, the pros and the cons of it. I think it's a great step to take because it gives the board members on the subcommittee a chance to ask direct questions to people who have lived it and are continuing to live it. So once we identify, once I'm able to, I've, I've spoken to a couple of colleagues of mine and I've got some leads, but I haven't locked anybody in yet. But I am hoping to be able to do that in the next, to be honest with you, I'm going to get for the next couple of weeks. We're going to go into July, and then I'm going to press some people and see if we can set up a meeting sometime, you know, beginning to mid-July and have that conversation. Did that accurately captures things?
Okay, Carrie, we're back to you. Any updates on cave?
No updates on cave.
Okay. So we're back to public comment, Hebron and over.
A correction to what Colin said, the program committee did meet, discussed the Latin program.
We did.
Yes. Yes, so we did meet, but that was, you know, not this, this past month.
We, we discussed it, correct, we discussed it in the last one, so you're right, thank you for.
Yes, we have, have met this year, but not in the last month.
All right, so Hebron Andover Marlboro Community Engagement and Attendance, the BOE public meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the BOE may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the BOE is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the BOE is not permitted to engage in the discussion of the comments presented. Is there anybody that would like to make public comment? Yeah, good, yeah, you have to go to the mic so they can hear you online. Make the long trek.
Oh, they fixed it. Good evening, everybody. Ethan Spinelli, twenty two, Rivendell Road, Marlboro. REA President. We'd like to thank the board on behalf of the teachers. I do want to thank the board for their work this year. It's been, it's been an exciting year. It's been a rewarding year, and on behalf of the teachers, we, I thank you for them, for the work that you've put in, for taking care of the children of this district and looking after the school. We really appreciate it. I hope the board takes seriously the comments that were made earlier. Cell phones are an issue. I know it's something I've talked with the high school administrators for at least three years now. We do have a board policy, but it's ineffective in aiding teachers that are struggling in the classroom. I am a teacher that struggles every day and forces kids to put their phone away. There's a holder on the door, the kids come in my room, the phone goes away from August twenty eighth till the rest of the year. Even today, I have to have a discussion with students. Please put your phone away. It's day one hundred and seventy six, and I'm still saying to students, put your phone away. And they still argue on day one, seven, six. It just does not help foster a positive relationship from day one. And it would be nice to see the district have a serious conversation with everybody, parents, teachers, students, about what's happening to our children in the classroom with this constant use of cell phones. If, if you don't believe me, I urge the board members, come into Ram one day, come stand in the atrium, just watch kids in the hallway bumping into each other because they're staring at their phone in the hallways. It is, it will be a difficult task, but it's, it's for the benefit of our children. It really is. Which segues way into my next comment, which I probably sound like a broken record. Another resignation this month, a young teacher leaving the profession, not just leaving Ram. I don't know if the superintendent had a chance to do his exit interview, but I certainly talked with every teacher that leaves. His concerns were twofold, you know, lack of support in student behavior, i.e. cell phones, and salary. What's interesting and what's concerning for me is this teacher was poached by the private sector. Usually in public education, we try to poach teachers from the private sector. But now they're reaching in and, and grabbing teachers. Places like EB and Pratt, they have a labor shortage. There's a workforce shortage. So they're doing more on-the-job training, and guess what more on-the-job training needs? Teachers. And they know teachers are hard workers. They know we had to know how to deal with people, they know we know how to deal with large groups, and they know we're underpaid. So in a district that can't even compete with our three sending towns in terms of salary, it's very concerning to see a, a young teacher just willing to walk away for what he said was twice the salary. And honestly, I don't blame him. They offer me twice my salary. No offense, my, you'll have my resignation next month. I hope that's not that case, but it would be a tough decision, I can tell you that. All right, last comment, if I do have time. T-val was mentioned tonight, the teachers are very excited for the new T-val program. It's going to be a great change compared to the old, you know, you're proficient. There's nothing more motivating than being told you're proficient at your job under the last, the last evaluation. You know, I'm proficient after twenty five years, that's makes me feel great. But this new program is, is going to be great. It's going to allow teachers to have more autonomy and setting professional goals. It's going to be great for our administrators to get in and really dig in with their, with their staff to understand what their needs are and, and really what their maybe goals and aspirations are throughout their career. And, and hopefully, that's going to translate into retaining more teachers, specifically, as mentioned, like our new teachers, really letting them get in there, becoming involved and listening to the teachers and what they see and what they feel is needed in the classroom. So I hope everyone has a great summer. I appreciate the work you've done this year, and I look forward to seeing you in September. Not too soon, but I do look forward to seeing you September, so thank you very much.
Do we have somebody online who wants to make public comment?
Heather, Heather, give your hand out for public comment.
I do, thank you. Sorry I couldn't be there tonight. I just wanted to piggyback off a little bit of what Ethan said. Heather Connors, eighty-two Cards Mill, Columbia. I'm a teacher at Ram Middle School. I just want to thank the board. I'm especially happy with the P-deck changes. I think it's going to be a great change for teachers and to really help to develop long-term goals and, and to help teachers work more collaboratively with one another rather than focusing on, you know, trying to, to focus on minor things in a single classroom, that these new goals really allow us to kind of collaborate and work on more long-term whole-school goals, which I think is really great. And also, I just wanted to congratulate Mary Rose as well. She's been an amazing mentor. She has helped so much in my transition to this district from the last district, and I think she's going to do really awesome things in her new position. So I just wanted to congratulate her and, and thank you all for making an awesome choice in, in choosing her.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to make public comment? Okay. That brings us to calendar events, heart fourteen point one.
I think the calendar event of substance at this point is promotion ceremony on Friday morning for the middle school and graduation at six o'clock for the high school. I, I am, if, if any of you have any sway in any way, shape, or form with the weather gods, wish for sun, whatever it takes. Right now, the weather is a little questionable for Friday evening. It's the, the forecast right now is, is there's a chance of thunder showers popping up in the evening. I met with the high school administration today and Michael Schleyhoffer, and we're going to have a follow-up meeting tomorrow to discuss contingency plans for outdoor graduation, which would be indoor graduation in the gymnasium. We're, we're hoping that that doesn't have to happen because it does limit the amount of tickets that are distributed to seniors. We do have spillover room in the auditorium for people that wouldn't get tickets to actually be in the gymnasium. But, but again, unfortunately, we're, it's, it's something that we are going to plan for the worst and hope for the best with regards to weather on Friday evening for graduation. So send us positive thoughts. As far as the, what's the last? Student discipline, the data is in front, is at the end of the packet, and I can certainly try to take any questions if people have it.
Do they have any questions online? Okay. All right. So we're going to go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation and review and discussion, discussion of the following non-affiliated employee contracts, building substitutes, assistant speech and language pathologist, administrative assistants to building principals, IT technician, data systems technician, human resource generalist, occupation, occupational therapist, directors of accounting, facilities, and IT and communication, business manager, and superintendent. So do I have a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing superintendent's evaluation in twenty twenty four, twenty five, non-affiliated employee contracts?
So moved.
Okay, and we're going to invite Colin to join us for the executive session. So we have Carrie as a first, Gabe as a second. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Anyone abstain? Right.